Okay, we'll go ahead and call this August 15th meeting of the Salina Planning Commission to order. Margie, has the Kansas Open Meeting Record Posting been done?
I can confirm that the packet was posted and the required notice of the meeting was provided.
Thank you. Dean, roll call.
I'll call, roll. Commissioner Seidow?
Here.
Commissioner Alt? Commissioner Wasserman?
Here.
Commissioner Farber?
Here.
Commissioner Ivey?
Here.
Commissioner Waters?
Here.
Chair Mike Sell?
Here.
That gives us a quorum of six of the seven currently appointed members, so with that quorum and with notice of today's meeting being provided, we have authority to move forward and consider today's business.
Very good. Hope you've all had a chance to look at the minutes from the last meeting. Is there any changes or a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the August 1st meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None being heard, motion carries. Dean, new business?
We have a number of new business items for you this afternoon. None of them are public hearing items that involve zoning ordinances or zoning text amendments, but we do have a number of administrative items which are Platts or site plan related. And so the first item is item 3.1, and that is an application that's been filed by Mark Augustine to plat the southwest corner of Waterwell Road and South Ninth Street to be known as the Augustine Edition. And that was reviewed by you at your last meeting on August 1st, and you voted to continue this item to today's meeting to allow for completion of a drainage study. And that drainage study has been revised and updated. But just to give you an overview, the area on the screen is the area that's proposed for plating. The nature of the request is to subdivide the property into four lots, with one of the lots being set aside for a convenience store, Travel Plaza, one for an RV park, one lot for mini storage complex. And then a fourth lot, Lot 3, which is kind of in the center of the property, is being set aside as a stormwater retention pond area. And because a retention pond is such a different concept than what we normally get with stormwater detention, which means that the water is held for a specific period of time and then released into a discharge point, which could be a stream or a channel or a roadside interstate ditch, this is a case where there's no good discharge point. And so the plan that was proposed was for a retention pond, which means the water be collected in the pond, and then the only way out of the pond, except for an emergency spillway, would be to have the stormwater percolate into the soil or evaporate. So the, what we wanted to confirm for you before we move forward with the plat was that the amount of runoff that would be sent there by the development would in fact fit within that area of the pond design and that the volume was there. And so I think we've, we've addressed the various access points, and you have attached to your packet there a letter from Wayne Nelson, the civil engineer. And so he notes in his letter that the engineer for Mr. Augustine has proposed providing runoff control via non-discharging retention pond. And although a retention pond is unusual for Salina, the city's design criteria notes, the design criteria is not expected to cover all conceivable situations to be encountered in engineering design, and allows for minor deviations depending on individual design situations. So the runoff contained in this pond will be removed via infiltration into the soil, French drains, and through evaporation. And so the, well, it remains to be seen, but it could be, we've had in other cases where we've got multiple lots where the detention area is phased in. So for example, behind the area where the Olive Garden Restaurant is, there's a detention pond along I-135. There's a fairly large easement there, but they only built the pond initially to handle the runoff from Olive Garden, and then RVs came in and they expanded the pond to accommodate that. So it's possible that this pond may be designed just to accommodate the runoff from the mini storage facility. Everybody will have a chance to observe how it's working, and before we go to further development phases or expand, we'll have a pretty good idea whether the retention concept is working as proposed. So the conclusion of the engineer is that there's adequate storage capacity to handle the expected runoff volume, and staff and the property owner will just see how Phase 1 goes and see if it performs as hoped. So with that being resolved, our recommendation would be to approve the proposed four-lot subdivision with the items identified on page 11 of your report. We have seven conditions, and so the, one has been pretty much fulfilled. We will, we'll get a more final detention pond design when a building permit application is submitted for Phase 1. I think the aspect is most confusing concept in our subdivision regulations is the perimeter street standards and the perimeter street analysis. And so the, the base expectation in the subdivision regulations is when a subdivision is developed that the abutting street next to it will be improved to city standards. But there's plenty of examples, whether it's on Ohio Street or on South Ninth Street or others, of sections of street that are adequate for the traffic that they carry. Markley Road would fall in that category. And so it will ultimately be a decision for the City Commission to allow this to be developed at a interim street standard, which means no curb and gutter and no improvement to city standards. So that's why in condition number one, it just says required street improvements to South Ninth Street shall be determined by the City Commission because that, that decision is a discretionary decision that they, they will make. And so that's why it's addressed that way. But with that, we'd be open to any questions you have about the material that's in the packet.
Any questions of staff regarding the drainage plan or any of the other items that we reviewed previously? Okay. Would the applicant care to address the commission?
I don't have anything for this, for the plat, but I do have some for the site plan when that gets ready. If you have any questions for me, I'd try to answer.
Any questions, Mr. Augustine?
Thank you.
Have anybody in the audience that would like to address this application?
I have anyone on Zoom either.
No one on Zoom, okay. Very good. We'll bring it back to the commission for discussion and action.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve application P-23-5A.
With the seven conditions that are-
With the seven conditions listed on page 11, yes.
My second.
And moving a second to approve application P-23-5A with the seven conditions listed on page 11. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None being heard, motion carries.
There is a companion item to this application. As we noted in our report, the plan was to plat this into four lots, three of which would have development, one of which would be set aside for the pond. The southernmost lot, Lot 4, is proposed for a mini storage complex, and because this property is located within the South Ninth Overlay District, it requires that plans be approved by the Planning Commission before a building permit can be issued. So Mr. Hers is gonna have a report for you on the proposed site plan for Lot 4.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew. The subject property is the south lot of the Augustine Edition that you just visited on with the plat, and the applicant is proposing to develop that lot with a mini storage facility that would feature a climatized building structure that would contain a retail area, also the office area for transactions for people renting mini storage units, as well as some climate-controlled mini storage units inside the building. So there's one climatized storage building, and then there are 20 non-climatized storage buildings for mini storage facilities there. This property and this project is a little bit unique. Typically, when we have a planned commercial district, the property is annexed and it is zoned and platted, and after it's platted and zoned, then a final development plan comes to you. In this particular case, because the property hasn't been fully platted, and we're still going through that plating process, it cannot be zoned either. So zoning is still pending. You have visited on the zoning in the past, and the City Commission can't take up the rezoning action to finalize it until the plating is complete. So what we have here is a property that is zoned A1, which is our agricultural zoning district, and therefore it's not really eligible for a final site plan review. However, the, the applicant didn't want to wait any longer and asked us to bring this to you for your consideration. So when we get to the end, when we talk about different options, that'll be something to keep in mind. So the property is zoned A1 with a pending rezoning for PC-7, which is our planned commercial district. And so we did our review based on that proposed PC-7 zoning, and it's coming before you because of two reasons. One, it is a planned commercial district, which requires final site plan development review by the Planning Commission, and it's also located in the South Ninth Street Overlay District, which also requires the Planning Commission to review and approve. So the site itself, again, is Lot 4, and it is a lot that contains a little over 12 acres, which equates to 527-plus square feet of retail space or of ground space. The building will be constructed in phases. The applicant does have a phasing plan and a master plan. So the master plan is, is on the screen here, and it does show the climatized storage building in addition to the non-climatized storage buildings. And the applicant is proposing to construct the first phase, which would be the not, or the climatized storage building along with these seven non-climatized storage buildings. So our review is based on both of those scenarios, where you have the Phase 1 piece of the project as well as the overall master plan of the project. So when we look at the, the overall project itself, at total buildout, the buildings would consist of 228 square feet of building area, which is 43% total lot coverage of, of the property. The C-7 district does allow a 50% lot coverage, so we are underneath that requirement. The paving area would be 281,000 square feet, which is 53% of the, of the total lot, which would re-leave the remaining 17,634 square feet for landscaped area, which is 3.35%. So ninety, little, almost 97% of the lot would be paved with either surfacing or building structure, with the remaining 3% being dedicated to landscaping. The Phase 1 area, which are those first seven buildings that we, we talked about, or eight buildings that we talked about, would consist of about 86, a little over 86,000 square feet of building area. And so as we, we went through our review, there were a couple elements that were required to look at. One is the setbacks of all of the different buildings, the, the access aisles, off-street parking, and the landscaping. The landscaping that you see in blue on the screen is what the applicant is proposing. So there is landscaping being proposed along Ninth Street as well as I-135, and those proposed landscaped areas are sufficient to meet the code requirements. We have a little over 10,000 square feet along Ninth Street and a little over 7,000 square feet along I-135 for a little over 17,000 square feet, which does exceed the required amount by a little bit. The one thing that the landscape plan does not have that will need to be added is there is a, a plan along Ninth Street where there is landscaping between the parking stalls and the street frontage, and there are a number of trees, but additional shrubs would need to be added as well because there is a parking lot screening requirement that we have for parking lots and, and between the parking lot and the street frontage signage. The applicant has proposed some sign area, if I can get to it. Okay. So there are two signs that would be free standing signs that are being proposed. One is a 50-foot-tall pole sign, and the other is a 25-foot-tall pole sign. Staff would note that the overlay district does have a maximum of 30 feet, so that's something we would have to work with the applicant on, is revising the elevation drawing of the, the taller 50-foot sign to reduce it to 30 feet. There's also a wall sign that's being proposed, but we don't have the dimensions of that wall sign, so that is something that staff would also need. The South Ninth Overlay District does have aesthetic standards, which are not typical for most of our zoning districts, and the main requirement is that the buildings that face your public street frontages, which in this case would be I-135 as well as South Ninth Street, that they have an attractive exterior finish and that no precast concrete or metal panels would be facing those street frontages. In this case, the applicant is proposing to have a, main, the main entrance of the climatized storage building facing South Ninth Street. There would be brick wainscoting on the bottom, along the bottom, a little, little over three feet, and then above that, there will be windows that would be encased with bronze brackets and, and window trim. So that is the primary frontage around the main entrance that would lead to the, the office area and retail area. Above the, this line here, this horizontal line, you do have some metal siding, as well as some metal siding that is, is below that bracket as well. And so if you look at the building elevation drawings that have been supplied, this is what the applicant is proposing. You have, have the brick along the bottom, you have the metal window frame, aluminum window frame that would have the bronze coloring, you would have the architectural metal paneling around this architectural feature that kind of, I guess, encases the window area, and then you would have the metal rib siding back behind to the east and then as well as the other three sides. So that's what's being proposed for the retail building. For the storage buildings, the applicant is also proposing to have a, a white rib metal siding building with their green trim that they, they have on their other units in town. So this is an example of, of what the applicant is proposing, where you have the white rib metal with the green metal accent trim there for those buildings. So one of the things that the Planning Commission will need to decide and determine is whether or not the proposed building elevations for the storage units meet the intent of the overlay district in terms of attractiveness and, and aesthetic features. One thing that we would note, because there are a number of buildings within the proposed storage complex, is that the intent of the code is for that, the main buildings that are facing South Ninth Street or I-135 to have the additional attractive aesthetic features on them, and it's not necessarily required of all of the buildings with, inside the complex. So basically, the buildings that face the street frontages would be the main concern that you would be reviewing and looking at as part of this deliberation. Off-street parking, there is sufficient off-street parking being proposed. The applicant is, is proposing to have off-street parking along the Ninth Street frontage in their front yard area where they have a parking lot. They are also going to have a number of U-Haul-type storage, moving vans and trucks to help people with, with moving their, their goods in and out of, of their storage units or in and out of their retail dwellings or their dwelling units. Yeah, I think that is everything. And so on page 10 and 11, you'll see some comments that we have provided. On page 10, staff did itemize the corrections that we would be needing for the plan, just to go through those again. One is we do have a site plan and a landscape plan, and they don't completely, the dimensions of them don't completely match, so they would need to be revised so they match each other. All buildings would need to be setback at least 30 feet from the building. This is especially important in the rear along I-135, as the buildings don't appear to meet the 30-foot setback, especially the, the one in the southwest corner. It's about four feet, and that would have to be increased to, to 30 feet. And then the drive through curb cuts would have to be reduced to 30 feet at the property line. The architect did reduce it to 30 feet, but not at the property line, and that's where that particular opening is, is measured, so that would have to be modified a little bit to get it down to 30 feet at the property line. And then all of the dimensions, the, a site, a full site plan of, of the master plan, of the total site plan, would have to be created that shows the dimensions of all the buildings as well as the different driving aisles within the site, and then the location of the proposed pole signs would have to be added to the site plan as well. The landscape plans would have to be modified to add parking lot screening along South Ninth Street, and the location of the proposed trash enclosure. The plans did show a trash enclosure, the trash enclosure elevations, but it did not show the location of where that trash enclosure would be. And then we would need the elevation drawings of the proposed wall sign so that, for the dimensions of, of that wall sign that we, that we looked at here. So having the dimensions of this particular sign would be helpful as well. So if those items are answered to the satisfaction of the board, or if the board feels they want staff to work with the applicant on, on all of those corrections, we would recommend approving the proposed plan with a number of conditions. And the first is that it would be subject to the property being rezoned from A1 to PC-7. So early on, when we started talking, I wanted to make sure that it was clear that that is something that-
I want to clarify that it's not PC-7, it's PC-
Oh, yes. Yep, PC-5, not PC-7. And then the conditions that we've listed with the revisions to the site plan, revisions to the landscape plan, revisions to the elevation drawings, and a number of standard conditions that we typically have after that for conditions 5, 6, and 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, and 12, which are on the page 12. So with that, we will take any questions that you might have.
Any questions, staff?
Dustin, I saw over and over in there that it was referenced as PC-7. Can I assume that it's supposed to be PC-5 all the way through?
It was, I did, that was, that was a typo on my part, and Mr. Andrew just reminded me of that as I was talking, like, well, that's, that's a silly thing to say, but thank you for that correction.
I just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing something that changed-
No, that was my mistake.
Dustin, is the, I presume that some of these sites will be RV storage as well, and is that curb cut sufficient, that 30 feet, for someone to get a large RV in there?
So what, what we do for curb cuts, for properties that require a lot of truck traffic or have vehicles that are longer and, and need a larger radius to, to turn in and out of the site, is we allow for the radius in the right-of-way to be widened as long as it needs to be, as, as wide as necessary. So there really isn't a, a limitation, if you will, on how wide that radius is in the right-of-way, as long as it pinches down to 30 feet. And that 30-foot maximum width is just to create, well, one, to stay to the standard that we have in order to keep the, the curb cuts at a minimum where it doesn't create a lot of confusion of where people leaving are supposed to exit and where people entering are supposed to come. Because if you get too wide, people tend to drive all over the place and it gets confusing. So having that 30-foot curb cut is, is what's typically done and required. That's the, that's the standard that we have in Salina anyway. In terms of is RV storage going to be a part of this facility, I'd like the applicant to speak to that. My, my guess is that yes, it would be, because they, they do have them at their other facilities, and there is, I'll pull up the site plan here. Mr. Augustine, correct me if my assumptions are incorrect, but there is a larger driving aisle for these properties or for these storage facilities that are along the south border. So my, my guess is that these would be the units for RV storage, but I'll let Mr. Augustine speak to that.
That's correct, and also the in-units facing south of the long buildings will have opportunity to house store RVs.
Okay. So what Mr. Augustine shared there for, to make everybody, sure everyone can hear, is these units along the south would have RV storage, and then there would be doors facing south on these units that would also have RV storage.
That's correct.
Very good. Any further questions, staff? Okay. Mr. Augustine, would you like to address the commission?
So the DRT notes when we met reflect that, that the curb cut should be up to 40 feet, so I'd like to clarify that. I know the plat's set for 40 feet. DRT notes reflect that, but I also know the city has held pretty firm on their 30-foot curb cut requirement, but is that possible to, to have 40-foot and radius out? And you see our facility there on North Ohio Street, all the new curbs on Ohio Street are busted out because nobody can hit it, so.
And RVs aren't getting much smaller either.
Right. So I don't know if this is the right format to ask for those variances, but I have several of those to, to discuss, I guess.
Well, I think at some point, we need to decide as a commission, are we gonna allow the staff to work with the applicant to, to resolve some of these issues? I personally don't have a, a problem with going 40 feet versus-
The code limitation is 30 feet. That's all you have the authority to approve. You can recommend to staff that we work with the applicant on 40 feet, but that requires a written request and approval by the city- a written request and approval by the city engineer to exceed the 30 feet. There has to be some basis. And part of the reason for that, as Mr. Hirsch alluded to, as soon as you get to 40 feet, then we're looking at requiring striping and, and lane designations and things like that, because if you get to 40 feet, people don't know whether it's a two-lane, three-lane driveway, they don't know if it's two lanes out, one lane in. And so if we get to that, then they'll have to work with the engineer on getting a, a traffic striping plan so that motorists who are using that at 30 feet, it's pretty clear that there's one lane in and one lane out. As soon as you get to 40 feet, then it's, you're then looking at striping.
Dustin, can you give us a rough idea what that distance is from the edge of the roadway to where their property line starts?
I'll look at the, this would probably be the better...
Okay.
About 50 feet.
Okay. So right there, is that Avenue A that's right there on the, on the east?
So this is Kubota, so Avenue A and B are to the north.
You're right.
This is B, or no, this is Waterwell.
So, so the, the, the radius there for Kubota is, it looks quite large and they bring semis in through that entrance as well. Is that also 30 feet right there?
Well, this was originally developed in the county, but I, I can, I can measure it.
What you can see is how big the radiuses are there for the Kubota. And so that's, the distinction between this property and North Ohio is that on North Ohio, there's about three to four feet between the curb line and the property line. So there's no room to put in a radius, whereas in areas like this where you've got anywhere from 20 to 30 feet, there's plenty of room to put sweeping curves in the radius.
So that's acceptable?
What you, what you see there is acceptable.
Yeah, alright.
And so we're just talking about the width of the driveway measured at the property line. If you want to put in sweeping curve radiuses like that, that, that is allowed. We're just talking about the width of the opening measured at the property line.
So with that...
With that in mind, we can make that work, so we can move on to the next item. So let's clarify the setback along Interstate 135. I thought it was 25 feet because it's 25 feet on Ninth Street, is it not? Is it different on Long Interstate?
Let me, I will confirm here. We'll, we'll double check all that, Mark.
And then along that topic, I guess, there's a, there's a condition to have a 20-foot easement for a loop water line. I think on the plat, it's proposed as, or it's written in as 10 feet. Does, is that a requirement in city ordinance or codes?
It's a requirement in the city subdivision regulations. It was also a condition on the plat.
Okay.
So, condition number six on the plat was that the 10-foot utility easement along the west boundary of Lot 4 shall be increased from 10 feet to 20 feet. And the reason for that is that the city crews cannot maintain a buried water line with only 10 feet to work with and we're not allowed to go into K-dots right-of-way to do it. So the minimum, sometimes you have a situation in residential areas where you have 10 feet on one side and 10 feet on the other side of a property line, but we can't get 10 feet on the K-dot side, so we need 20 feet on the east side. And so the, that, that is a requirement in the subdivision regulations that easements need to be 20 feet in width and Mr. Sayadell may have some experience with that, so.
Way in?
He's right.
Hard to work in a small space.
Alright, so it needs to be 20. You mentioned that the high-rise can only be 30-foot maximum height is, is that a condition of PC5 or is, I thought it was 50, I don't know where I read that.
No, you're correct that the C5 district would have a 50-foot allowance. What makes this unique is that overlay district. So what you have on this property is you have the underlying zoning district that's being proposed to be rezoned to, which is the PC5. And then you also have an overlay district that kind of, well, it overlays it, it lays on top of it, that has additional requirements. And so one of those additional requirements is that you have a 30-foot height maximum on your sign and then another thing is the aesthetic standards for the buildings facing the street frontages.
So has there been variances granted along, in the PC5 along Interstate?
Um, there haven't been any variances granted. There is a special provision built into the Plan Development District for Long MacArthur where they have, I think like a 35-foot sign, but they, they, they built that into their rezoning request and I think that's how that was approved.
Okay. So if I wanted to apply for a variance, how do I do that for the sign or is that even possible?
Well, the, the difference between where, where we are now and where compared to say a, a project like Long MacArthur. When Long MacArthur came in for rezoning their property, they had a plan for their dealership, for their signage, all those things. So the planning commission reviewed the request to change the zoning and Long MacArthur's site plan at the same time. So where you can vary things like that is within the ordinance that rezones the property. And so the place we find ourselves here is that the, the ordinance rezoning this property was done in 2022. There were no requests for any variations or anything to the underlying standards at that time, so as Mr. Hirsch looked, nothing was, was baked into that. So for example, when the Hilton Garden Inn was done, they applied, that is in the overlay district, but they applied for the Plan C5 zoning at the time of their application. They requested a variation to the building height limit of 50 feet to allow a 62-foot tall building. And so that was approved through the ordinance that was approved for the Hilton Garden Inn site. So we're in, we're looking at site plans and the place where standards get varied are in the ordinance that zones a property. There's also a variance standard outside of that, but the origin of that is, and I, I still have the chart, but every single sign on South Ninth Street from Magnolia South to Waterwell is 30 feet tall. And so the planning commission wanted a level playing field and they wanted no variations and the only one that's slight is the one at Long MacArthur where they have a sign that's 35 feet tall. But all, all the other signs on South Ninth Street are, are 30 feet tall. And so that's, that's what the origin of that is.
So, so back to Mr. Augustine's question, is there a process where he could go separately and have...
There is a separate sign variance process. We can back up the train and try to modify the ordinance that was approved for this property and see if it can be done through that, but that would require coming back to this body, so.
So there, there's the, there's the options for you.
That sounds like a very good one.
Where, where's the placement of that, that taller sign? Where, where was the placement of that sign planned?
Uh, Long Interstate and just trying to get above all those trees to the south.
But it wouldn't really be on Ninth Street so much, it's on the 135.
Right, just trying to... Not being a professional developer, so I run into some of these snags, I guess, but I guess the last item I wanted to discuss, which probably falls into the same criteria, is something that's near and dear to everyone's heart and it's landscaping. I'm not opposed to landscaping. Uh, I have a lot of landscaping on my properties and we maintain it, but I guess the one area that I would like consideration if this is the, the area to do that is that's along Interstate 135 because I don't think that's applied at the same standard that the sign is along Interstate 135 for the businesses that are along there. And I really fail to see the purpose of it, I guess. It's not that, like I said, I'm opposed to landscaping. I think it adds to the property and the, and the merchandises the property, but I'm, I'm not finding that to be of value along Interstate 135. So I'm not sure, again, if I missed a train on that one or if that's still something that can be considered.
So I think what, what you have said, Mr. Augustine, is that there is... There's different properties along Interstate that do have landscaping and those that don't. Is that what you're saying?
What appears when you drive that. Now, it could be that it's not maintained.
Yeah.
But there's a lot of that around the city, so.
So what, what we did is we actually had Mr. Gage, our intern, do research on this because of, of your question regarding that. And what we found is that 100% of all of the properties that were developed after the landscape regulations came into effect in 1994 do have landscaping along the interstate. So there are a number that, that are pre-1994 and there are a number that probably have some landscaping that has, has died, but we, we were able to confirm that with the exception of, of one property, which is the subway over there on Crawford, which was redeveloped. It was a redevelopment project that happened in 2003. All of them have landscaping or landscape plans along the Interstate I-135. And the one on Crawford, the, the subway has a green space, it just doesn't have plantings and it's along the, the ramp.
I'm not opposed to green spaces, but I, I, I guess I'm, I'm looking at some of the businesses that are closer to where this property resides, that it appears that, that landscaping does not exist, but maybe it does.
We can walk down the corridor and go through them all if that's what we need to do. So Midstate Mall is, is pre-1994.
Right.
You've got Coles, which has a detention area and landscaping on, on the top of the, the brim of the, of the pond. You have landscaping at the former Med Express. You've got, I think this is Country Inn and Suites, you have landscaping. You've got Conklin, which is pre-1994 and they haven't developed all the way out. So they, they do have, if they were to develop all the way out to this property line with future phases, eventually they would be adding landscaping as well. Oh, jeez. Sorry, I'm going through all this and I don't have my, my screen shared.
So we would add that not only did we look at 135, we also looked at I-70 and it was 100% along I-70 as well, including Foley Equipment, including Holiday and Express, including Bob Quat and Morton Buildings. And so anybody that had double frontage on a street and an interstate, we counted the interstate as a front yard for landscaping. And part of the reason for that is if it's a front yard for signage, it makes sense to treat it as a front yard for landscaping because it doesn't, it intellectually doesn't make sense to say, well, it's a front yard for a sign, but it's not a front yard for landscaping, so.
Mr. Augustine, given the, I, I understand that this is a time-sensitive project for you, is that a deal breaker for you?
Is that a deal breaker? Well, we're only doing phase one and I, and, and it's not required during phase one is my understanding, the interstate landscaping. So we can take that up for debate some other day, I guess, when we get down to that point. But I guess I wanted to bring it up because you are approving the overall master plan and see what latitude there would be in that landscaping code. You know, landscaping has lots of different values, but it also, it, you know, one of the things you're trying to do as a business is merchandise yourself when you can hide yourself with landscaping, uh, which, you know, I think Long MacArthur did with all the pine trees, you know? So I'm not sure how that has value to the business and commerce, but at the same time there's, you know, I understand the need for it and I, and it's like I said at the beginning, I'm not opposed to it.
Certainly your, your property over on, on North in Ohio, there, the landscaping is, is kept up nice and it, I think it adds to the property in terms of...
And I, I agree with that and I might note that it's not even required there because it's, it's I zoning and so we put it in just to...
It looks nice.
Look better.
I have to duck a little bit when I run on, on North Street under the trees there, but other than that, it's great.
We need to work on those a little bit.
Well, the shade is worth the benefit.
That's on the list.
Okay.
So those are my comments, you know, whether we can address those now or not, but I would like to move forward with the site plan and, and before we can keep moving with, with the city commission and to approve the, the plat and then we could submit building plans, so.
We'll discuss that among the commission when we get back to that stage. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone in the audience care to address this application? And Dustin, do we have anybody online?
We do not have anyone online at the moment.
Okay. Okay, let's bring this back to the commission and I guess the first question, if, are you happy with having the staff take care of some of these checklist items as they've done in the past? This one's a little more substantial, but instead of having another meeting to...
Before any actions taken, I do want to clarify that that front yard setback is 25 feet, not 30, so just so that everybody understands that.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that for Ninth Street and for, for 135?
It is for both, both frontages.
Well, I guess, are you comfortable with having the staff work on some of these punch, punch list items?
I think one of the questions are, and it's something we can work with Mr. Augustine on, but I, I think that if the, if the sign along I-135 is part of the phase two development, then there's more time to work on that and work with options for that than if it was something that was going to be put up as part of phase one. But I think the, that we can come up with the most appropriate way to look at that with Mr. Augustine. If it is going to be, if the sign's going to be deferred until he does phase two, then I think that gives us more options for dealing with that.
And is that the understanding, Mr. Augustine? Okay.
Okay. Very good.
So is the, the landscape requirements, is that just for Lot 4? Or so when you add in one and two, will that require...
When lots one and two come in, those will also have front yard landscape requirements.
Okay.
Any other questions?
And so our, our look back was to make sure that we were being consistent. What we wanted to confirm is that we were not, that we were being inconsistent when we were bringing reports to you that we were saying landscape was required one time and another time we were saying it wasn't and we found that 100% of the time we told you it was required so that we're being consistent.
So is the whole property, not the whole property, I'm sorry, that whole lot, is it fenced then with the, the privacy fence and the ornamental?
Yeah.
Okay.
None of Mr. Augustine's facilities have privacy fences.
So it's all the ornamental or is there fencing around it?
The front, frontage would be the black wrought iron with Ninth Street, the rest will be chain link.
Okay. Oh, that's what it says here. They called it privacy fence, but it says galvanized chain links. And that'll be, so the only thing that'll be outside of the fence will be the air-conditioned building then? The climate-controlled building?
Any questions regarding the exterior look of the building and how that fits into the overlay? the overlay district? Any discussion?
I think the, I think all the material lines up, and I think it's going to be a very good improvement to that area of town. I'm trying to figure a way to work this landscaping. I, I'm trying to see the purpose of the landscaping on 135. I guess I had the same question that Mr. Augustine had.
Well, I, I can tell you both from an administrative staff standpoint, from a planning commission standpoint, there, that is the area that we're, you and as a zoning administrator, have the most discretion. But I can't vary the landscaping for one owner unless I make a written interpretation in writing as to why I'm doing it. What is the justification? And is there some, is there some situation, some topography, some obstacle, some shape thing that prevents that property from being able to have the landscaping? So it's within your discretion to say that no landscaping is required there. However, when they come back, or he comes back with a travel plaza or some other use on lots 1 and 2, what are you going to say then? Are you going to say the same thing? And if you are, then you have to have the same reason for doing it. And if your reason for doing it is because it's mini-storage, then you should make that as your distinction. But when you, when you make that exception, you just have to provide the rationale for that exception, so that the next applicant that comes in knows what the, what the standard or the exception is. If you have this circumstance, or this topography, or this lot size, oftentimes, if somebody is redeveloping a piece of property that already has substantial paving on it, then there's some discretion to not require strict application of the standard. But if it is within your discretion to do something about the rear yard landscaping, you just have to provide a reason for doing it, so that that can be available when somebody else comes in and you want to require them to have rear yard landscaping.
And I think we're, we're looking at the same issue that we talked about with the tidal wave car wash, where we allowed some of that landscaping to be altered, so that they can get a better view of their, their glass.
You allowed it to be distributed outside the front yard, to be distributed around the site.
And is that an option, where we can adjust more towards the Ninth Street side? Or, or is that not?
That is an option.
Personally, I, I think, I can see both sides. I, I do understand Mr. Augustine's desire to proliferate his business through people being able to see what's going on there. But I also see travelers going through and seeing Salina, and is it just a bunch of buildings, or does it look nice? Is there landscaping with that? I would be, I guess, open to some type of altering of that, that landscaping, but I don't know that I would be ready to set a precedent, precedent that it was devoid of landscaping. Personally, I'd like to hear from everybody else as well.
I, I think that question's for Mark, is to, what's, what's his reasoning for not wanting? I guess a couple of reasons. One, it, it hinders visibility over time, because there's so many trees that are required in that landscaping code. You know, like I said, I'm not opposed to green space. I think green space adds value and, and aesthetics to the property. It's just, it adds expense, it's, it's something else to maintain, and because there's so much frontage there, that it, it, it almost doubles the amount of landscaping, because I have two frontages, and typical, most, most businesses only have, you know, a frontage that they need to deal with. If you drive Interstate 135, landscaping may have been required, but most of it is not maintained. And so, to me, having too much is, is almost a detriment, because it doesn't get maintained. And I know the city doesn't have any leverage to make property owners maintain their landscaping until there's a request made, and then they can go back and, and ask for that. But, you know, it's our desire to maintain what we invest in, and landscaping, one of those things, and, and just having too much is, you know, sometimes, less is more, you know? So I just like a nice, clean look. You know, the amount of trees and stuff the landscape architect put in there, I mean, I, to me, it's just so much overkill, and it's hard to maintain, and it's hard to keep, you know, keeping to look nice. And, but, there again, I'm, I'm for landscaping. You look at my properties, they all landscaped, and we maintain it, and we keep going back and reinvesting in it. So, it's not, it's not that I'm opposed to it, that's not what I'm, 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 I'm saying. I'm just opposed because I have double frontages, and is there a way to mitigate that? Either just green space, reduce the requirement, something along those lines, so.
So the, the formula is based on having one, one tree unit for every 500 square feet of landscaping. So there's, there's two options along that approach. One approach is to say it's required to be green space, but it doesn't have to have any plantings. Or the other option is to say having one tree unit for every 500 square feet of landscape area is overkill, and it should be reduced. So those are really the, the two options are to reduce the amount of plantings within the green space, or the other option is to say it has to be retained as green space, but there's no formal planting that has to occur there, which means it would just be grass.
Mr. Augustine, what, what about shrub units?
I'm not opposed to shrubs, it's, it's just one of the, there's another item that you, you put it out there along the interstate, and the wind, and it's just going to be hard to keep out there, to sustain it over time. It's hot, windy. We can definitely pick that topic up when we get to those phases, but I just wanted to make sure that, that it was discussed at this point in time, and if there was some deviation.
Dean, is there a mechanism we can use to postpone the, or talk about the landscape issue as we get to Phase 2?
Well, the point of today is that even though it's a phased project, I don't think you, or certainly not staff, we don't want to have, to have Mr. Augustine come back to get approval of Phase 2. So what you're approving today is the master plan for the site, and then he can choose to develop it in phases. But you're looking at the, the site plan in toto, and so, the, the difference here is that on a administrative building permit, the zoning administrator can decide or not to decide whether to grant any variation from the strict application of the landscape regulations. In the case where the site plan has to be approved by the planning commission, then that's your role instead of the zoning administrator. So you, as a planning commission, have the discretion to grant the same variations or deviations that I would as zoning administrator on a site plan that's before you today. And so, the only thing that's required is to say, "We don't think it should be required because it will hinder visibility, and it will be difficult to maintain." And then you'll just have to decide in the future, when you have another site plan that comes before you, whether that, those same reasons carry to that plan. But I don't think it benefits anyone to put the, put the, shifting the, the time when it occurs to when Phase 2 is done, because I think he wants to know that his site plan for the entire site is done, and then he can decide how he wants to phase it in.
When we did the application for the outdoor power center on South Ninth Street there, we, we deviated the landscape a little bit by moving some of the trees to a different area, so that the, the building could be seen. Do I remember that correctly?
Yes, so there was a Ninth, Ninth Street frontage, and then they had a, a side street that was coming in on the north side of their building. And so, some of the front yard plantings on Ninth Street were shifted to, the, the same thing was done a little bit on the not-to-be-built, quick-lube place on South Ninth Street, where some of the front yard landscaping was shifted to the, the street access that was coming in from Ninth Street. So that, that's a case, the same case as with tidal wave. You weren't necessarily reducing the green space, it's just the way that our regulations are drafted. It puts an emphasis on the front yard area between the building and street. And so, from our perspective, the interstate is a front yard between the street, which is the interstate in the building, but you can decide that it's not as important as Ninth Street. So I would go back to saying that you can either say that it must be green space and doesn't have to have any plantings, or you can say that the one tree unit for every 500 square feet of landscape area is overkill. And I'll look to Mr. Hirsch to tell me how many tree units would be required on I-135 under the strict application of our regulations.
I'll try to pull up some plans here.
Isn't it in your report?
It is, I was just going to try to bring up a graphic as well, just because I think that helps bring context. So this is what Mr. Augustine is, is proposing along 135. These are all, all oak trees, so there's seven oak trees in these two landscape areas. This landscape area is almost 3,700 square feet, and this one is about 3,300 square feet. So you're, you're around 7,000 square feet for all of that, so you're looking at, at 14 tree units, basically. Well, to you, what you do is you, you add them both up, and you divide it by, by 500, so you, yeah, you'd be looking at 14 tree units. And what he's done is he's increased the density on Ninth Street already. So if we were to go to the Ninth Street side. Now, some of these are ornamental trees, and so, ornamental trees are a three-to-one ratio, so where you have three ornamental trees for each tree unit. So that's why there's also an increased density, is because there's a number of these that are crabapple trees, so to get a tree unit, you have to have three of them. But he also has more tree units proposed along Ninth Street than he does I-135, which, which is fine. I mean, it's, it's fairly even between the two frontages, so.
So if you, if you add both of those frontages up, has he met the?
He's, he meets the requirement right now.
Okay.
Yeah, so today, he meets the, the landscape requirement today without having to add any, any tree units. So the, the seven tree units that he's proposing along 135 would be sufficient. It's a matter of if you wanted to reduce that anymore. I would note that, you know, it's, it's, it's a lot, but it's also 12 acres, so the green space that we're talking about, again, is about 3% of the project, so it's a pretty minimal area. But if, if you feel it's excessive, that's definitely your prerogative.
So can you go back to the interstate side view there, Dustin? So there's still open area there in that plan where, where there's no green space, is that right?
Right, so the white area that you see would be either, well, most of it's going to be paving area, because the, the boxes that you see are the buildings. Yeah, so, this is, this might be helpful to note as well. The total requirement is 28 tree units, and the architect or the project designer does have some extra tree units that they're proposing. So what the plan has is 32, there would be required of 28. So theoretically, they could reduce some, some tree units, probably on the Ninth Street side, because it's, it's quite a bit more dense than the I-135 side. The I-135 side has the, the seven shade trees, while the Ninth Street side has 21 shade and 12 ornamental. And so you could reduce the 12 ornamental, and I think that would give us, that would, that would still get us the 28.
Well, first of all, Mr. Augustine, would you be okay with, with working with staff on an arrangement of that 28 tree units to happen in a way that suited you and the staff?
We can do that.
Okay.
Would it be, would it be better to have red bud, small trees for you, so you got, see what you got there? Well, to be honest with you, that landscape design is put together, and there hasn't been a lot of thought to it, and I was, my plan is, is that when we go to build it, is put that out to bid and, and, and meet the landscape code for Ninth Street, and then whatever we decide about Interstate 135, but relook at that with some local landscape people. Landscape architect that had in Wichita, and places, put stuff on the page to meet the code, I mean, to be honest with you.
Rest of the Commissioner's okay with that 28 tree unit?
Are, are you concerned about those seven trees on the 135 side? Is that your biggest concern?
I'm just, I'm just trying to reduce the requirement, so, can we live with it? Yes. If I wanted, no.
Okay.
Is everybody's mic on?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I guess one of the, one of the ways to address that is through, through the various conditions would be, instead of voting on that as part of your action, you could, you could indicate in your conditions that a detailed planting plan must be approved by the planning staff at the time a building permit is issued. And you could have that as your condition as it relates to that, rather than you as a body weighing in on the plan that's before you. So you could have as part of your action, and that, that would apply to each development phase, so that we would work out a planting plan in Phase 1, we would work out a planting plan at Phase 2, and you could just, through your action, make that a requirement, that a, a detailed planning plan that would have to be reviewed and approved by staff as part of the building permit for each phase.
And could we make that Condition 13?
Yes, I have to, I have to see how it relates to any other conditions that Mr. Hirsch may have in there, so.
Number 8 addresses landscaping.
Yeah, but it does, it's not specific, it just, that is a normal requirement, that that, that we have landscaping complete before the occupancy of a building. So Condition number 8 doesn't have any quantitative action to it.
Okay.
So I guess, yes, that would be a, you're going to have to help the Commission a little bit here, Dustin, to, to go through these conditions one by one and see which ones are still relevant.
All right. So, they start on page 11. If you'd like to turn to page 11 in your report, we'll go through them. The first is that the site plan approval would be subject to the property being rezoned to PC-5. It's currently zoned A1. The second would deal with site plan revisions that we would work with the applicant and his design team on. And that would be, one, matching up the landscape areas with the dimensions on the site plan, so that those. so that those dimensions on the landscape plan and the site plan are the same. And that all of the required setbacks are met, including the 25-foot front yard setback. So that's an amendment because it says 30 in the report, but as we clarified, that should be 25 feet. And that the site plan contains dimensions of each of the proposed buildings, that the curb cut be reduced to no more than 30 feet measured at the property line, and that the dimensions of each of the internal drives are shown on the site plan and marked out appropriately, and that the location of the proposed pole signs would be added to the site plan. Is there anything that needs to be discussed about that condition? Okay? Then the third would be a revision to the landscape plan.
And I think that's the appropriate place to strike that and to substitute that a detailed planting plan shall be approved by planning staff at the time that a building permit is issued for each development phase.
Yep, and that would be fine.
Okay.
So that would be three. Number four is that the building elevation drawings show the dimensions of the proposed wall sign. And number five is that all requested revisions shall be made to the site plan, landscape plan, building elevation drawings prior to issuance of a building permit. In other words, all of these revisions that we've been talking about would have to be made before staff would issue the building permit.
I think the term landscape plan could be struck from Condition number five.
Number six deals with signage and the maximum square footage and maximum height, which is a pretty standard condition that we have in our planned districts, especially those in the overlay district. Number seven deals with the maneuvering and access and parking of the vehicles, that they all be concrete or asphalt. Number eight deals with the design of the site and that the approved plan shall be completed prior to occupancy of the building, which is to say that they couldn't start using the storage units or operating their business until everything is completed according to the plans. And that, number nine, deals with site lighting to confirm that all of the lighting on the site is downcast and doesn't create a lot of light spill or glare on the neighboring properties or streets. And number 10 is a KTH requirement because of the size of the lot. There is a land disturbance permit that is going to be required and a notice of intent. And that's something we work with the engineering staff on, as well as the applicant's design engineer. Eleven, the project shall be completed in substantial conformance to the approved plan. And 12, a building permit for the project shall be obtained within 12 months of site plan approval.
Any questions to staff on those conditions?
Oh, did I say 12? That's 18 months, sorry. So any questions about any of that?
And have we heard from the audience in the online...
You did check at one time to see if there was any public comment, so.
You wanna check and see if anything's changed?
We just got detoured.
Okay. We've been on this one for a while, but Mr. Augustine's getting to be a fixture here, and we wanna take care of that. Okay. Any further discussion?
I'm still fine with, you know, treating that I-135 side as a backyard space. You know, I'm all for businesses having the opportunity for marketing, especially on that. And that's one thing we talked about a lot with Bex as well. Marketing is important, and this is gonna be a huge improvement to that part of that Ninth Street corridor. And he's got a lot of density with plantings on the Ninth Street side. I'd like to see us go a direction, maybe having green space set aside back there without the requirements of those trees. I know we put in there, you know, detailed planting plan, but that almost seems like we're passing the buck to the staff when we should be making the decision for him.
I'd be comfortable with green space.
I don't know how that needs to be worded.
Well, he's still gonna have to have a landscape plan for the front side.
For sure.
Right.
For sure. So are we comfortable with having the detailed planting plan still listed under Number Three with our...
So if you wanted to take that approach, you'd have to have, the majority would have to agree with rewording that to say a detailed planting plan for the Ninth Street front yard would have to be reviewed and approved by planning staff at the time a building permit is issued. And so you would just have to specify that it's for the planting plan for Ninth Street only, and so that there isn't a need for a planting plan for I-135.
Well, again, I hate to set a precedent on what we do for other developments in terms of interstate frontage. But I'm also, this is not a deal breaker for me, and also, I am ready to move on. So, that being said, is there anyone that would entertain a motion? I mean, I would entertain a motion if someone would be willing to make that.
Mr. Chair, if we do go a route that deviates from the strict application of the code, we would like to have justification for the record. Just, yeah, so as we go forward with projects in the future, we can determine why this was different and how to apply things in the future, how to apply the code in the future.
I see. Thank you. Okay. Everyone on the same page now? Somebody make a motion?
I too would like to. I definitely wanna see this plan move on, but are we gonna have this conversation now for every future building in the overlay district?
Well, I think we're running out of places with interstate frontage, are we not?
No, we have property that is, where the Hilton Garden Inn is, one of the reasons that wasn't discussed is because it doesn't have frontage on I-135. The lot directly to the west of it has frontage on I-135. We looked at Logan's Road House, which turned into Perkins. That has landscaping on I-135. If you drive and get off the exit at Schilling Road and look at Courtyard by Marriott, they have extensive landscaping along the interstate ramp. So all, it is within your discretion, but as Mr. Hirsch is saying, is that it helps you for future decisions, it helps staff when we're writing reports. That, I mean, it's something that a Board of Zoning Appeals would have to do with regularity is what makes this property or this project different than Perkins or Hilton Garden Inn? So, or Courtyard by Marriott? So, well, how come they didn't have to do landscaping on this project, but you're telling me that it's required here? Well, in that case, the planning commission found, and you help us fill in the blank, and we'll carry it out.
Yeah, because we have, I mean, to this point, we have 30 years of precedent of not doing that.
Our job is to be consistent and treat everybody equally. And that's what we're gonna do, and that's not what you have to do. All you have to do is, if you're gonna treat somebody unequally, is to give the reason why. And that's only fair.
I think that's where I was going with the green space, making sure we had the green space in there, so that there is that buffer, there is that aesthetic appeal, without blocking the view.
Well, unfortunately, the green space would not be applicable to our landscape standards that we have right now. Is that right?
You're the ones that's reviewing the site plan, and so you can, as we've said, you have the discretion to say it's required to be green space, but you don't have to plant anything in it. And that's what we're trying to work on with Condition Number Three. But all we're, if you wanna say, we don't think Mr. Augustine should have to plant anything in that I-135 green space because it would hinder visibility of his many storage units and be difficult, in this case, to maintain, then you should make that part of your motion, and then we know why. Maybe it's less important for a restaurant or a motel not to have landscaping. And maybe it's more important, in this case, not to have landscaping because it's a mini storage facility. That's a judgment for you to make as planning commissioners, but you just need to help everyone by articulating that.
I'm gonna ask one more question, Dustin. Can you give me an idea what the elevation is of the interstate at that point and the elevation where...
It's pretty level. It's like within three feet, so it's, there's not much change there. And we haven't really talked much about it. We've talked about it in other projects in the overlay district, and it was mentioned in the report. But making a determination of the elevation of the buildings is also gonna be part of your responsibility with this particular review because of that overlay district. And making sure that the aesthetic and materials are of high quality and appearance is something that you'll have to determine. And typically, the code prohibits precast concrete or metal paneling, and we have quite a bit of that in this case. So that's something else to consider and think about and discuss.
So the reasoning here is that the office building that's gonna be climatized and be used, that is the most prominent space that extends out to Ninth Street. So you can take the position that that's the only building that matters. But for example, at Long MacArthur Ford or at Marshall Motors, none of those elevations that face Ninth Street have metal siding. They do on the backside, but they don't on the sides that face Ninth Street. And so if you articulate that the only building that is, you think is subject to the overlay design guidelines is the front office building, which will be closest to Ninth Street, then you just need to articulate that.
I think that's kinda where I was leaning earlier with the fencing question, because, you know, even if you did wainscoting and nice material on that first building there, you're not gonna see it through a six-foot fence, which is, in that case, it's a decorative fence on that side. I think it'd be kinda the same situation going around the building. That's why I didn't really pursue the...
Yeah. And that's exactly a perfect articulation of what your decision is based on. And so the fact that it's set back behind the building and the fact that it's behind an ornamental fence is a perfectly valid reason for not requiring that it be something other than ribbed metal siding, so.
Okay.
So does that need to be added in?
No. You've made, as long as that that's reflected in the views of the other commissioners, that would be a basis you're giving for approving the building elevations as proposed.
I'm okay with the building elevations. I'm still having problems with the, you know, with the tree landscaping side. I'm sorry, guys. I wish we could come to some consensus here. We may have to take a vote and just, and see what happens, but...
It's a tough issue because either you got the rule or you don't.
Yeah. I struggle with changing the rule. I understand both sides. I'm just torn right now. I just, I don't want other properties...
The choices are to, the choices are to either grant the waiver to the, as part of your action today, or the original wording we came up for three was to let us work out a plan with Mr. Augustine at the building permit review.
I'm for that idea, myself, that what Dean just stated, my thoughts.
Well, that...
What we originally had.
All right. Was that a motion?
Yes. Yes. For everything on page 11.
11.
11 and 12 with the...
Changing Number Three to a detailed planning plan shall be submitted for the Ninth Street frontage and approved by staff per phased development.
So what does that say for the 135 side?
That the staff will work with Mr. Augustine.
But that's not what it said, right?
By work with Mr. Augustine, do you mean to...
28 tree units.
The only thing wrong with that as read is it refers to the Ninth Street side only, which would imply that it's so...
Oh, that was my second.
Yeah. So that's the second version. But if you don't, if you don't specifically call out South Ninth Street, then we're gonna work with Mr. Augustine on a detailed plan for both frontages.
Yes. That's my motion.
Is there a second to that?
One second.
Okay. Been moved and seconded to approve application Z-22-2B with the 12 staff recommendations and changing from a PC-7 to a PC-5, and that Number Three shall read, "Detailed planning plan shall be submitted and approved by staff per phased development."
I think 2B should also read a 25-foot setback as well.
Oh, correct. Yep, thank you. Okay. Pretty involved motion. All those in favor, oh, wait, there was, what is her second? Oh, Mr. Ibe seconded. I'm sorry. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
So we record as five yays and one nay. Motion carries. Thank you. And thank you for, yeah.
So your plat and your final zone, the other commission...
Application, we're moving on to application P-23-3A. Bex Hybrid Seeds.
Still making notes on that one, so I'll look up from that and go to item 3.3, which is a final plat application filed by Bex Hybrid Seeds requesting approval of a final plat for a one-lot subdivision in a location I believe you're familiar with. I wanna refer you to a drawing that is at your places, and then I'm gonna ask Mr. Hirsch to put up on the screen. And so I think you're familiar with the North Ohio location that we have moved to this back piece and that there's a peninsula or flag coming out to Ninth Street for access. And so the reason that there's no drawing in your packet, but you have it at your places and some uncertain language in your report is that we came up with a fire protection plan about 3:00 on Friday afternoon after the report and everything was all written and things to go out. And so to summarize, we have a case where we have a one-lot plat, access is from Ohio. Ohio is in that interim street condition where it's a perfectly good, well-maintained street, but it doesn't meet the strict city street standards because it doesn't have curb and gutter, which is a city standard. The lot design is a single 23.92-acre campus. It's somewhat triangular shaped as you get to the west, and there's also an old oxbow from Mulberry Creek in the corner, which they're planning to use for detention. And so as we noted, there's a 12-inch public water line that runs along the east side of North Ohio Street up to Flying J. And so that's a 12-inch line, so it's adequate for most commercial uses. But just to give you some perspective, the Foley Equipment Building is 30,000 square feet, and the proposed Bex facility is almost 100,000 square feet, so it has greater fire flow requirements. And so at the time, we were preparing our packet, city staff and Bex's design team still hadn't reached a mutually agreeable fire protection plan. design team still hadn't reached a mutually agreeable fire protection plan. And so we discussed things like a pond, a water standpipe or tank, or constructing a looped water line connection, tying the line in Ohio over to the line in North Fifth Street to eliminate the, the dead end situation. But the, the end result was that the, what Beck's decided on and what you have in front of you is that the, Beck's has determined that they don't want any public infrastructure or any public utility easements on their, on their platted lot. And so much of the commentary you see in the staff report is no longer applicable. The normal policy for the City of Salina is that all fire hydrants are public, all fire suppression systems that have fire hydrants are public water mains that are owned and maintained by the city. So I can, I mean, I, whether it's Schwan's or whether it's the new Cedarhurst development out on South Ohio, or whether it's Foley Equipment, those are public water mains, publicly maintained hydrants. Beck's wants to have their own private system and have their own privately maintained hydrants. So Dustin, what I need is the final plat on the screen so that we can talk about it. That's what's being discussed. And so that's, this is the previous version, so I've gotta see whether Mr. Hirsch has the, the updated version that I sent to him and that you have at your places.
This is the one that I received earlier today.
No, it's not. So I guess we'll take it off the screen and I'll just, I'll just do a narration. So the one that you have at your places that we received from Cobb Alley for the meeting, the thing that we would call out is there's only one location on that, there's two easements on that plat. One, there's a 10-foot utility easement that runs parallel to the south Foley Lot Line and there's a 10-foot utility easement that runs along the line that is parallel with Foley Equipment on the east and that is for a evergy transmission line that was relocated when the new interchange and bridge was put in. There are no other utility easements on the property. All water lines, hydrants, fire suppression system will be privately owned and maintained by Beck's and then there'll be a drainage easement for the Oxbow detention area. So what the plan is, instead of trying to get a sufficiently sized line or a looped line coming from Ohio, the Beck's is going to work with the fire department and come up with a buried tank that they will install on their property and then that tank will be a reservoir. So instead of drawing water and a fire from North Ohio, they will draw water from the tank. And so they're, they're using that to get the fire flows they need for their fire suppression and also for their sprinkler system. And so the only thing that we would have that's new or, or different is I would refer you to page nine of your report. And so there really will be, under condition one refers to installation of public improvements, there really will be no public improvements, so Beck's will be responsible for all onsite and offsite private improvements instead of the term public. So there won't be an extension of public water lines or public sewer lines, they will be private so that, that term is public. We do have a revised updated drainage study, but we don't have a final design for the grading and reshaping of the Oxbow, so we'll get that in conjunction with a building permit for the site. They will need, under condition three, they'll have to build a temporary all-weather access road and have some fire suppression on the site before they start erecting a building. Number four deals with executing and recording a maintenance agreement for the pond area. What we're gonna propose is one additional condition and so kinda parallel with condition four, we would have an additional condition that Beck's Hybrid Seeds shall execute and record a fire hydrant inspection and a maintenance agreement. And this should be done prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy for any building site in the subdivision. So the, the concern is that we just, there is no real precedent or policy for, no one wants to maintain their own fire hydrants and so there's, there's no real process for that. Almost all the fire hydrants in the City of Salina are publicly owned and maintained and so we will have to have a inspection and maintenance agreement that establishes a, a process for Beck's to inspect their hydrants and report on what their findings are. And then it would have a, as, that agreement would have a situation where if necessary, but not required, the, the city could step in and make necessary repairs to any hydrants to make sure they're functional and operational. And the reason for doing that and the reason for recording it is it's, it's so rare within the city to have private fire hydrants that we would want an instrument that was recorded. So for, for some reason, there was a change in ownership or change of hands in five years or something that there's a record of that these are not city-owned and maintained hydrants. And so that is, we have the six recommended conditions with all references to public improvement struck from condition one and then an additional condition that Beck's Hybrid Seeds execute and record a fire hydrant inspection and maintenance agreement as an additional condition. But the biggest change between now and the preparation of our report is that there will be no, as proposed, no public infrastructure, no public water and sewer lines, no public hydrants, no public utility easements on the property except for the one that is for Evergy for their line. And it's just because the line seemingly straddles the property, goes back and forth between being on Foley property and Beck's property, so we wanna get a full 20-foot width in there to allow that to be protected and maintained.
Okay.
So with that, I'm open to any questions. We have Justin Owens, the engineer for Cobb Alley, but he was even more disadvantaged than staff was because he didn't really know till earlier today what the fire protection plan was and so he was, based on our reports, he was able to get a drawing that reflects what Beck's desires are, so.
I have, I have a question, Dean. Why would they wanna be in the city if they're not gonna use the city infrastructure?
Well, they're connecting to the city's water system and the city's sanitary sewer system network. They just don't want any public infrastructure or easements. Most of their other locations are in rural locations. They're predominantly an agricultural company and they, they don't wanna, they don't want public utility easements across their property, which they are fearful will obstruct their ability to do things. So that's, that's a choice that they've made and our job's just to make sure that the, the maintenance responsibilities for that is well documented and that they're, that everyone understands that they're responsible for that, but it, it still needs to be maintained so that it works and the hydrants are all functional, that if the fire department is called out there, that they know that the hydrants are gonna work just the same as the city hydrant. But the reason for the annexation was so that they can connect to the city's water syst, they still need the water supply from the Ohio Street Line, it's just they're going to store it in a tank instead of drawing it directly from the North Ohio Line.
Any further questions, staff? Would the advocate care to address the commission?
Good afternoon, Jeff Mays, Compro Realty, 157 South Seventh, here on behalf of Beck's. We don't have a lot, I have really only one question on the, the six items that staff listed and I'm, I'm just confused on the maintenance and retention, or the maintenance agreement for the retention pond, since it's all private, nobody else is gonna be using it. We're gonna have a agreement with ourselves.
No, it's an agreement between Beck's and the city that they agree to maintain it and if they don't maintain it, it, so it can't function as a, and its intended purpose that the city can go on the property and make necessary repairs if it's not draining or functioning.
And you guys have a copy of that agreement? I mean, you've got something that?
We have, we do that for virtually every subdivision, so we have a standard for that.
Okay. I mean, oftentimes we do them when we've got multiple people draining into them or multiple owners, but I was just curious on that. Otherwise, we have no issues with any of the conditions set forth by staff. Do you have any questions of me on behalf of Beck's? You closed, I will belabor your landscaping point real quickly because the, I didn't get up and say anything, but then we talked so intently about landscaping. I would strongly encourage, it's been talked about within the community for a long time in the private sector about going in and getting in front of your group and talking about the landscaping plan and requirements as a whole. I haven't had time, staff hasn't had time, you haven't had time to hear it and so it hasn't happened, but it's kinda coming to a head. My favorite item that we run into all the time is when we, when we develop commercial or retail up against residential, we have a rear yard landscaping plan or a requirement. And then we have a screening requirement, so we have to go back and put landscaping and then we've got to put a six-foot privacy fence in front of it. It's just simple stuff like that that may leave and look at, I encourage you to look at your plant, I mean, your planning requirements as a whole as compared to other communities or what you desire for this community. Happy to help you put together a private group to work interface or whatever, but I would really love to see the landscaping plan looked at as a, as a whole. So I thought I would take the private, or the public comment section to mention that to you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Like, like most plans like that, it's not perfect, but it's what we've got right now and, and Dean, is that something that, that's under our jurisdiction to do?
Well, it'd be similar to anything else, whether it's, we're talking about group daycare homes or other things, those are things that the planning commission can initiate. We've been working on for some time and Mr. Michelson's gonna help us with this whole question that the planning commission had a study session on of what is native and what is drought tolerant and it's two different things, but some people think we're not doing enough to promote native plantings and so the problem is that it's very difficult to find any group of individuals that all agree on what's a native plant and what is a drought tolerant plant. And so that will, that's something that's already being worked on and so they'll, but it's, it's just like anything else, in order to, to do something like that, you really ought to have a study session to, to understand what the code says now before you start on a path of doing something else. If you don't understand what it, what's required now, it's difficult to know what you wanna look at differently.
Well, I, I think that in our housing association, we have come up with the same scenario Mr. Mays was talking about, where we use plantings as a screening. The, the only thing that complicates that is somebody needs to maintain it. It's like the one we heard earlier, you know, if it's not maintained, then is that a benefit or a distraction? So anyway, but I would sure like to see us look at those things and certainly include Mr. Mays and, and anyone else that you think's appropriate in the, in the study session group.
Agreed.
Just like our comprehensive plan changes as we move along, our landscaping plan should too. Okay, back to this application. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address this item?
We do not have anyone on Zoom at the moment either.
Mr. Owens, do you wanted to vent on your, your short notice on?
We got it figured out.
Good deal. All right, very good. Okay, we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion, possibly action.
So again, we have six recommended conditions there. We're recommending the addition of a seventh condition that would require Beck's Hybrid Seeds to execute and record a fire hydrant inspection and maintenance agreement prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy.
Does that need to be read into the motion?
It would just be a, a motion to approve it with the six conditions in the staff report and the seventh condition outlined by staff. That would be an appropriate way to do it.
With that, Mr. Chair, I would make a motion that we approve application P23-3A with the six recommendations listed in the staff report, along with the addition of number seven as read earlier.
I'll second that. Been moved and seconded to approve application P23-3A with the six conditions and the seventh condition of executing and recording and a maintenance and inspection agreement for the fire hydrant system. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None being heard, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we move on to application P23-4.
Item 3.4 is an application filed by Gary Johnson of Johnson Trucking requesting approval of a final plat of a five lot subdivision of a 35 acre tract of land located on the north side of West Diamond Drive, north of I-70 and directly west of the Petro to Travel Plaza and Jackson Flats. And it's to be known as the Jack Johnson Trucking Edition. And so this is a property that was annexed into the city at the time that the West Diamond Drive infrastructure improvements were put in. There was a preliminary plat of this property that was approved earlier by this board and this is highly unusual from standpoint that the Marietta family that owned the property at the time didn't wish to plat it, but they did dedicate right-of-way for Diamond Drive and they dedicated utility easements to allow some of the infrastructure network to be installed. So this is an unusual plat from the standpoint that there's no new right-of-way being dedicated and no new easements being offered. As we noted, Diamond Drive is a public street, it meets the city's public street design standards except for the lack of sidewalks. The other thing that we discussed was that the normal course of action and the subdivision regulations and an annexation agreement that was entered into required that whoever subdivided this property would be required to submit a design and drainage plan for design and construction of drainage improvements is required for future development of the property. future development of the property. Um, and it says that will be determined through a drainage study submitted and reviewed at the time the property is platted for reasons outlined at the last meeting, such as the lack of, um, any hard, specific prospects or, um, land configurations the applicant requested and the planning commission agreed to defer submittal of, um, of the drainage study until there's a submission of a building permit application. And I think the, the most, other than this, is a close contest with Mr. Augustine's property for the flattest property within the city limits. Um, but the difference here is that this property is, um, below and within the hundred-year flood elevation. And I'm going to ask Mr. Michelson to just give you an overview of what the existing elevation conditions are and then what, what new development would have to be elevated to in order to make this buildable. So I'm just going to let him give you an overview of this, um, elevation information on the property.
Thanks, Mr. Andrew. So what we have here on the screen is a, a graphic that shows the, the lot with coloring on a gradient from lowest to highest elevation. That's only relative to the maximum and minimum elevation, so the difference between the greenish and the blue is only about a foot. Uh, Dustin, can you zoom in on that, on the lot so I can see the numbers? The numbers that we here represent, well, the, these lines are contour lines, these labels are the elevations of different points on the lot. The maximum, zoom back to see the whole thing, the whole lot. There we go. The maximum is up here, is right up here at this 1218, there's a 1218.24 down there and your minimum elevation is right down in the bottom or the southeast corner there. Kind of having to do, you could see that there's a slight elevation difference here, which I assume was for, to get the runoff to go down to that corner, which I think it used to cross or go off into a drainage ditch there. Uh, the, can you scroll to the bottom right of the page? There's a little table. The minimum elevation on that lot is 1217.99 feet above mean sea level. The maximum is 1218.98 feet above mean, uh, mean sea level. So the average elevation on that whole lot is 1218.49. Base flood elevation for this lot is 1220. So the requirement is to elevate to one foot above base flood elevation. So any, any building pad on this lot would require about two to three feet of fill, but two and a half feet of, of, of fill be brought in for the, for the pad.
So depending on the size of the pad and the number of pads, that could add up to a fairly substantial cubic yards of fill. So we just wanted you to understand that you, no one's going to be able to just go out there and place buildings on the property, they're going to have to do some filling and compacting and, and getting those building pads prepped to do that. So we just wanted to make sure that, um, it's not, it's not common. Um, we have some areas in South Salina where the, the ground elevation's four, six, eight inches below the hundred-year flood elevation, but at two to three feet, that's, this is a more substantial difference between existing and what would be required elevation. So we just wanted to make sure that you understood that. So, um, the other thing is that when the Diamond Drive improvements were made, there were deferred special assessments that were levied against that property and those deferrals ran for 15 years. And it just corresponds now with the plating of the property and the 15 years are, are coming, um, at the same time. So the way that deferred specials work is that you get 15 years of non-payment and then after the 15th year, you have to begin paying those specials and that's paid over 15 years. So it's not a, it's not a lump sum payment, but it means that payments on those specials will, um, have to be made annually for 15 years. So we just wanted to make sure that we documented that this property is subject to existing special assessments. So, um, we've outlined your options there on page 11 and 12 and, um, you could approve the plat, subject to any conditions you feel are appropriate. You could postpone consideration, um, to a future meeting date if you feel like you need additional information, or you could vote to deny the final plat if you don't think it conforms to the subdivision regulations. Our recommendation would be to approve this final plat, subject to four conditions and the third one is, is probably the most important, it's just that it, it allows the property, um, drainage study to be deferred, that, that just shifts the responsibility that whoever goes in to build a new building or facility on this property, they'll be responsible for submitting a drainage study and, and providing a plan for how their drainage runoff will be handled. So, um, that's not unprecedented, there's a couple lots across the street that have that same deferral, but we just wanted to call attention to that. It's, it's different than Mr. Augustine's case where he submitted a drainage study upfront and in this case, it's being deferred.
Very good. Any questions, staff? Would the applicant like to address the commission?
Do you have questions?
Any questions for Mr. Mays? Okay, thank you. Anyone in the audience like to address this application?
We do not have anyone on Zoom right now.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion and action.
I move we approve application P twenty-three dash four A with the staff's, um, recommendations on page 12 of the staff report.
In a second.
Second.
Okay, been moved and seconded to approve application P twenty-three dash four A with the four staff recommendations. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None being heard, motion carries. Application P twenty-three, uh, PO two dash two B.
So this particular item dates back, its original origin was in 2002 when the Yoast addition was originally platted and it is now, um, majority of it has been purchased, um, from the Yoast Family Trust by the Kathleen Bradley Trust. And what is before you this afternoon is a request or proposal to take the original 19.90 acre lot that was platted as, as lot one block one. And the belief of the applicant is that that property is, was too large to develop as one. Um, I think if you, um, are familiar with the Love's Travel Plaza at Abilene or the Love's Travel Plaza at McPherson, you notice that neither of those Love's Travel Plazas ended up in Salina. The 19.9 acres was kind of designed and set aside to accommodate that kind of travel plaza. The new owners thought that was too large and so eight acres was, um, split off for the Old Dominion facility. And so that left 11 acres, uh, remaining. The Bradley family thinks that's still too big to market and sell separately, so they're proposing to take the original lot one and divide it into three lots. And state law allows you to split a platted lot one time and any additional splits requires approval of a replat. So the request before you today is to approve a replat of, um, lot one block one into three platted lots. We have reviewed them, they are all, um, obviously have frontage on a improved public street, Yoast Drive, they all have access to utilities, they all are sufficiently sized to meet the requirements of the zoning district they're located in. And so, um, meeting all the lot size and frontage requirements, um, we believe that this proposed replat should be approved. Um, and so we just have the single condition. This is a case where, um, again, we didn't have a master developer, so there wasn't any master drainage plan. There's something that's a, a borrow area over behind the police shooting range and it could end up that runoff from here will end up there. Um, but there would just be a requirement that, um, as these lots develop, the individual developers would have to submit a drainage plan for those lots as, um, development is proposed. So our recommendation would be to approve this replat, this portion of the Yoast addition, subject to those two conditions. We think this is a pretty straightforward request.
Any questions, staff? Would the applicant care to address the commission?
Sure. Good afternoon, commissioners. Uh, for you though, so that doesn't know me, uh, my name's Jake Bradley, I'm here on behalf of Kathy Bradley Trust. Uh, just to give you a little background, about six months ago, uh, a company out of Texas had contacted me, they wanted to add another location in Salina. After working with them for several weeks, uh, they decided that the lot one block one was their best choice, however, it was larger than they needed. So at this current time, we actually have a customer under contract and I believe they've already contacted the city, uh, getting ready to build. So it's, certainly our wish is, but it was also somebody else who's, you know, in the shadows right now waiting for this lot to be ready to go for us. So at this point, I just ask for your blessing. Anybody have any questions for me? And just so you know, I can't disclose the customer, but it is a customer that does truck sales, class eight, uh, they service trucks, uh, so I believe it falls within the zoning, uh, that we're currently in. So, no questions?
Any questions, the applicant? Thank you.
Sounds great, thanks.
Okay, anyone else from the audience like to address this application? Dustin, anybody online?
We do not have anyone online.
We're going to have to improve our audience. Okay, bring it back to the commission for seven votes.
Mr. Chair, I believe this is straightforward as well and I move, uh, we approve application P zero-two dash two B with the four conditions that are listed.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded?
I'm sorry, two conditions, I'm sorry.
Been moved and seconded to approve application P, or I'm sorry, zero-two dash two B. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None being heard, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. We did that without a break. Okay, preliminary discussion items.
We don't have any, but we'll have one that we're, we're working on, um, that we'll probably, may bring to you the next meeting where, um, we think there's, um, some experiences we've had with Kansas Wesleyan and with, um, Salina VOTEC. We think there's some things that we would like to present to you that need to be adjusted in our university district sign regulations. We've done a lot of things with the public school signage in terms of some adjustments that were made for South and Central High. We didn't do the same thing with, um, our university districts, but they think, we think they need to be looked at and, um...
Are we talking digital signage mainly?
We're talking digital signage, but we're also just talking about total square footage for campus signage. We, we were, um, from the standpoint that we were treating elementary schools and high school campuses the same way with the same kind of size restrictions and things and it, it's our, we believe our signage restrictions we have for the university district are too, um, strict and need to be, um, liberalized and made more consistent with the way we treat our high school campuses. Said, we worked with USD-0305 to do that and, um, we'd had some discussions with Kansas Wesleyan, but they didn't follow up on that, but we've had a situation here with Salina VOTEC where, um, they've run up against some things that we have. So we'll be bringing that to you as a preliminary discussion item and see if you want to move forward with something on that.
Public forum. Anybody have anything?
We do not have anyone online or in the room it appears.
I'd, I'd just like to say thanks to staff for getting out the packets on Fridays and, uh, I know that's a lot of work, but, um, given the, uh, progress we've made in shortening up the presentation by staff of the individual items, it puts a little bit more onus on us to, to, you know, be more thorough in our reading of the packets and it's nice to have them a little early. Not that I don't have anything to do on the weekends, but...
Yeah, no, it was, it was a little, it was a little more stressful this time just because I, I was scheduled for a conference call with Beck's Hybrid Seeds at three o'clock on Friday and then we were just like, well, how can I do that and get the packet out at the same time? But, yeah, thanks to Margie, we did and so you were able to get it on Friday, so...
Thank you, Margie.
Yeah.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
In a second?
No one wants to adjourn, that's okay, but we're leaving.
Yeah, we are adjourned, thank you.
I don't think we voted.